Oh, okay. Now that's really good.
No, you know what I did? I moved chamber stuff around today. I had to work before I got here.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I went to Mexico. I said, "I went to Mexico."
I'm in Hawaii.
Oh, no. Yeah, you went to the beach. You went to the beach.
Well, let's wait on Burt. I thought it was gonna be Burt we were waiting on. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order and ask you to silence your phone if you have not done so already, and ask Chief Page to offer our invocation tonight. Please stand with me.
You're helping by the God, Lord, we come to you. We just thank you for all the blessings you give us. We don't deserve, God. We thank you for the rain, and we thank you for your Son, Jesus. God, we ask that you be with our council. We lift them up to you, Lord, that you give them guidance, that your will be done. God, we just thank you for all the things that you do. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody and council. First item on our agenda is the items of community interest. So I have several things to talk about tonight, um, so I'll make sure I don't leave anybody off. First, council, our next meeting is June the 24th. We'll only have one meeting in July. It'll be the first meeting, uh, which is the 8th of July. Bert and Jay and I will be attending the Texas Public Power Association Conference at the end of July, so we won't be here for that one. If we have a second meeting, it'll be a special call meeting, but you'll get plenty of notice if we need one. This Friday, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting the Chair Fair Event, and I'm sure most of you have been there, and the creativity that goes into the chairs that are donated always make for a fun night. The 22nd of June starts the full week kickoff of the Jim Bowie Days Association Rodeo and Celebration. Golf Tournament, Top of the Lakes Fishing Tournament, the Top of the Lakes Golf Tournament and the Fishing Tournament, which is on Sunday. And then starting Monday night, there's rodeo events almost every night. So it ends on the 29th with a concert by Curtis Grimes. So if you can, make plans to be there. The next item on our agenda is the City Manager's Report, and he's got a full two pages there.
Sorry about that. Uh, the Nelson Street Project is slowly proceeding because of the wet weather. Uh, the contractor MX Instruction is tilling the soil in the street, trying to get the ground to dry out so that the soil can be treated with either lime or cement. Those chemicals dry the soil out so it can be compacted to accept the concrete and not sink. Soil will be compacted in six inches of street-based material will be compacted on top of that, and then the concrete for the street will be poured over the compacted base. It looks like the weather is heating up, which will help to process the price for the small sidewalk along Mill Street at the ditch on Houston Street came in too high, so we will either use a local contract, concrete person to build a bridge, or we've talked to MX, and they probably have another plan that would be better than what the engineer drew up. It's not, uh, something that's gonna take anything other than pedestrian traffic, so it doesn't have to be, uh, as highly rated for traffic as, uh, something in the street would. Sir line project's moving slowly also because of the rain. The contractor, BCAC Underground, vacationed for a week during the time, so probably a good idea with all the rain. As the ground dries out and movement down the alley behind Rayburn Street should speed up. Campered the cleanup of yards on Zahara. That process should also speed up with warmer weather. The contractor Patterson Construction on the Wichita Street Waterline Project moved in last Friday and should have started work today. As you recall, this is a community development grant that's putting in the Wichita Street line. Uh, two weeks ago, we discovered a leak on the water line that supplies Ammon Carter Water Supply Corporation in Silver Lake with treated water. Our crews had to cut out a four-foot section of the leaking line and weld it back in place. The work was finished last Thursday, and the water was turned back on. Ammon Carter Water Supply had to institute a boil order for their system and just as a precaution, we instituted a boil order for Silver Lakes. Uh, as I write this, on Thursday, Jay Sutton said that both the boil orders should be suspended Thursday, and they were, so, uh, the water tested out just fine. We have scheduled a meeting tomorrow with the engineers, uh, and with Brazos Electric at the substation. Final details of the new transformer project. I will inform you about the meeting and final numbers at the next city council meeting, or if you'd like to know before then, you can come by my office anytime. A change that we're considering making in the coming months is to test the storm sirens on a different day and time. We may start testing them on the first Friday of each month at noon, but that's not concrete. We're just thinking about it. There's several reasons that we're wanting to change, but before we do make the change, we would notify everyone so that they will know that it is just a test, so... And it'll be done in clear weather when we do test. In looking at the most recent, uh, April financial report, I noticed that we continue to fall behind in our electric utility collections and, uh, proceeds. We're collecting less than our cost in the fuel, uh, cost, the PCRF. If you'll recall, that's, uh, what we pay for the fuel that it takes to generate our electricity, which is putting us further behind. I heard the council reconsider increasing our PCRF rate so that we will stop falling behind. Anybody got any questions?
That's gonna be in our workshop discussion tonight, too, so we'll move that to there. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda item. Your minutes for the May 13th meeting have been included, and if you have read them and have no changes, I'll entertain a motion to accept them as presented.
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Bates? Shaw?
Yes.
Ashley? Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the second reading of the Ordinance 2024-01, an ordinance of the city of Bowie, Texas, adopting a water conservation and drought contingency plan, establishing data, information, and policy for water conservation programs, criteria for the initiation, termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water usage, uses, establishing penalties for the violation of the provisions for enforcement of these restrictions, and establishing procedures for granting variances and providing severability and an effective date. This was also presented at the last meeting, so again, this is our second reading. I would entertain a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Ashley? Do I have a second?
Second.
Post? Ashley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Your next item on the agenda is the reappointment of two Parks Board members. Again, we have to vote on them separately. Margen Latham and Janice Belahooda both serve on the Parks Board at this time. Both of them have shown interest and desire to stay on the Parks Board, and the minutes from the Parks Board meeting shows you that they have resubmitted their names. So the first one is for Margen Latham. I would entertain a motion to accept her reappointment to the board.
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Shaw? Ashley? Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
And Shaw?
Aye.
The second one is for Janice Belahooda's reappointment to the board. Have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
Bates? Do I have a second?
Second.
Post? Ashley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
McEwen?
Aye.
Thank you to both of them. They're not here, but they know how much I appreciate their service on the board. Um, the next item is an expenditure presented by the Parks Board. Well, let's look at this two different ways. There is an expenditure, and I'd like to Sony to come to the podium. He did some repairs on the walk-in trail. I'm gonna let him tell you what he did and where this is coming from.
Okay, so what we did after the, it was brought up at the last council meeting. I talked with Clyde and gave him an estimate on what it would cost to resurface the whole park. But in between that, I decided that we'd go ahead and just use a non-oil patch material that we can get, and we went ahead and decided to start patching in most of the bad spots. We're probably about 75% done. There's some areas that need to dry out, and we gotta, need to redig a ditch line to keep the water from washing the walkway out by the swimming pool. So we've pretty much completed most of it already. And I recommended with him is, I wouldn't, for two reasons, try to redo the whole walk-in trail this year. For one, we're behind already on our streets, so I'm not gonna have time to get to it, but I think it's something that we probably need to take care of next year. But for now, it's much better than it was.
So did, did any of you get a chance to go look at it? Yeah. The Parks Board and their minutes, that's also on your packet. They have earmarked $20,000 for the walk-in trail repair. Obviously, the expenditures that you have before you are just a little over $4,000.
Right, and that's just for...
$4,100, so, I mean...
That's for just touching it up, yeah.
That's for touching it up for now, making it safe until Stony can get to it and do more extensive work. But as much rain as we had, you're so far behind already. But he does feel like he's made it safe. So, um, the, um... Tonight, we're here to approve the expenditure that's already been spent, but covered by Parks Board money for the repairs that Stony has made on the walk-in trail. Are there any questions?
Is that $20,000, is that... What do you estimate the cost of a full repair to be?
That's, that's the full cost, $20,000, to resurface it with chip seal, yes.
Okay.
But the material I use right now, like I said, we've got two different types of patch material. One has a lot of oil in it, and this is more of a dry, 'cause I was concerned about people getting the oil when it gets hot, it's gonna get on their feet and stuff. So that's why we use this material.
So right now, we're looking for an approval on the expenditure. Do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
Bates?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Shaw? Thank you, Stony. Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ashley?
Aye.
All right. Now we have some guest speakers tonight. So because most of you have not been on the council since the last time Ken or Wes or Gary came to visit with us, and because we are talking about the PCRF, I asked BTU to send someone to talk to us about the, what we pay for and the volatility in that. So Wes Williams and Ken Lindberg are here, and I think Ken is going to speak to you.
So evening, Mayor and council. I have some handouts for you all if you'd like. They're front and back. Thank you.
And so what I'll be talking to, uh, what I'll be talking about tonight is BTU's rate to Bowie and the Bowie bill and things on your Bowie bill. The thing about the Bowie bill is some of the stuff comes from BTU, and some of it comes from ERCOT slash the PUCT. And so some of it is part of BTU's rate, and some of it is just a pass-through to another party. And so I'll explain all that stuff as we go along. So, um, on, on the BTU bill, the things that are, come from BTU and are part of our rate is a demand charge, an energy charge, and a fuel charge. There's two other items on your bill that don't come from BTU, but we, um, we pay them on your behalf, and then we bill you with no markup. It's just a sheer pass-through. And that's the transmission cost of service and ERO fee. And so we'll talk about that a little bit more. And so on the next page is a, just a snapshot of Bowie's bill. And what I have here is the April 2024 bill. And so I've highlighted the, um, the, the major components of the bill and the things that we'll talk about a little bit more tonight. The energy charge, the demand charge, the fuel charge, and the T-cost. Or the transit, the T-cost charge. And so I put in red here, and I want, uh, people to notice, is that the T-cost for the April was over 27% of Bowie's bill. And so we'll come back to that and why that's important. So going down the components of the BTU side of Bowie's bill, the first is demand. And so what demand is, is a charge based on Bowie's peak usage. So we take the, the maximum amount of usage that Bowie had, and let's say it's, say it's 10,000 KW. And so that's the peak for a single hour. We use that 10,000 KW, and we multiply it times $1.43. And so actually, if we go back to the previous page, actually, in April, it was 11,700 times $1.43, and that was $16,000. That rate has been unchanged for five and a half years. And five and a half years ago, that rate actually went down. So that rate has had really no variability in the last five and a half years. The only variability on that rate is, um, it's not in the rate, but on the charge is just, you know, if it's summer, you're gonna use more, and so you're gonna peak higher. And if it's, um, like April or March, you're gonna use less, and so your peak's gonna be less. So the amount of money you'll owe in March is less than it is during the summer just because you're using less energy. And so the reason for that charge is that's how we recover our fixed costs. And so that would be like debt on our generators, employees to run our generators, employees to staff our, um, trading and scheduling organization. So the next charge we have is an energy charge, and that's based on usage. Uh, so that's basically every single KW, kilowatt hour you use. And so Bowie ranges, depending on the time of year, once again, four and a half million KW, kilowatt hours to nine million kilowatt hours a month. Depends on the time of year. So summer, you're gonna be at the higher end of that. In March and November, you're gonna be on the lower end of that. We charge, uh, .01557 dollars per KWH. So that rate has also been unchanged for five and a half years. And five and a half years ago, that rate actually went down. The reason that that rate went down five and a half years ago is we paid off a coal plant called Gibbons Creek, and so we extinguished the debt on that plant. And so the amount of money we had to recover from Bowie and our retail customers in our local area was less, and so the rate went down. So that has also been stable for five and a half years. So the next thing we have is a fuel charge. And fuel is, uh, based on KWH, so that's usage. And so what this recovers is the cost to generate, uh, our electricity or our power plant. So if we bought natural gas to run our power plants, that's in the fuel rate. If we bought power from a third party to serve load, which we do frequently, um, that's in this rate. The charge has averaged over the last five and a half years .03343 dollars a KWH. And the volatility has actually been pretty low with this, although it does jump around as, as gas price goes up and down. The biggest point of volatility was Winter Storm Yuri, when the natural gas cost, uh, instead of us paying $2 an MMBTU, we paid up to $500 an MMBTU. And so, um, BTU had a very large bill that month, and in turn, Bowie had a very large bill that month. And so I'm unsure what Bowie did that month, but because of that, we had to, because of that large cost that month, we had to raise our fuel rate to our customers because we had to recover, um, a very large gas bill. And so those are the three, those are the three, uh, components of the BTU rate to Bowie. And so that's everything on your bill that, when you pay it, it comes to us and we put it in our bank account. The other two things, uh, we are just, we are just paying on your behalf and then, um, billing you and with no markup. So it's a pure pass-through. And so the first thing is transmission cost of service. And what this is, is this is, uh, this is how ERCOT pays for our transmission system. So the moving power from the wind to Dallas. I think I saw them up near Decatur, had a really good view of them. T-cost pays for that. And so T-cost is assigned to loads, all loads. Doesn't matter who you are. So BTU pays T-cost, Bowie pays T-cost. You know, San Antonio pays T-cost, Austin pays, everybody pays T-cost. And what, and it recovers the cost of the transmission system. That's to move bulk electricity around the state. And so we pass this charge through to Bowie at no markup. Unlike BTU's rate to Bowie, uh, transmission cost of service has gone up a whole lot. And to give you an example, so in 2008, uh, the total ERCOT recovered for T-cost was $1.3 billion for the entire state. So in 2023, um, they're now recovering 4.9 billion. So that's almost a four-fold increase. And so if you do the numbers, the average increase over, per year, is about 9.1%. In the next slide, you can see a graphical representation of, of T-cost and how it's escalated and has escalated quite a bit. So what, so what BTU did is in 2012, um, for our retail customers locally, we changed our bill up, and we put a line item called a regulatory rate. And we put T-cost into this regulatory rate. And the goal of that regulatory rate is just to recover the, the T-cost of what ERCOT's billing us. And so since 2012, we've had to raise our regulatory rate times. Without these, if we wouldn't have done that, we would be, we would be way under-recovering, and we would be having quite a bit of problems with our finances right now because we wouldn't have enough money to meet our operations. And so even with those five increases, we've still struggled to appropriately recover because of the massive increase in T-cost, you know, the almost four-fold increase. A little bit more about T-cost. And so you might be asking, you know, why, why is this going up so much? You know, there's really two overriding reasons. Texas is a growing state, and there's a lot of people moving here. There's a lot of industry coming here. And to serve that industry and the growing state and the people, they need electricity. And so, and the way that you get electricity to the load centers is you build transmission from the power plants to the load centers. So that's one really big reason is that, you know, it's, I guess it's a downside of being in the greatest state in, in the US is everybody wants to come here. And, um, the second reason is the massive amount of wind generation and solar generation that's being cited in Texas. And so when they, when they put a power plant in Texas, they need to build transmission to it to get the power out of that power plant. The way it works in Texas is loads pay for that generation, not the power plant. You know, BTU, Bowie, you know, the, the loads. And so as, um, this wind and solar generation has just exploded, you know, the transmission, and, and, you know, and it's been expensive. And so there was one last part, it's called an ERO fee. It's very small. That's just a reliability charge that, uh, ERCOT has a reliability organization that they use to monitor, um, market participants. And it's, it's like $5,000 a year. It's billed quarterly. But that's the only part of your bill. It's really, it's not material because it's so low. It generally doesn't move very much. You know, moving on, as far as the rate outlook for BTU's side, we're actually wrapping up a, um, a, something called an IRP, an Integrated Resource Plan. And so it's, it charts a path for the future and gives us an idea of what our cost will be. And so the preliminary results are that, uh, the rural base rates, which is what Bowie is, that's what we charge you, are revenue-neutral, which means we don't need to collect any more money from Bowie. What we're collecting now is fine. The rates might move, but one might go a little, one might go up a little bit, another one might go down. It's what preliminarily we're seeing. And so it's, it's, it's looking like there's gonna be net no change to you. That's the good news. The bad news is that BTU sees no insight to the constant increases in T-cost. So, um, you know, for, for BTU's side of the house, which this doesn't affect you guys at all, is as these T, as we, as T-cost increases, we plan to keep on marching up that regulatory rate just to recover what we're being charged. Like I said, we've increased it five times over the last 12 years, and it, and we'll, it probably won't be long before we do a sixth. You know, to, to the best of our knowledge, um, this is what almost all other utilities are doing. This is how they're handling the T-cost because it's, um, you know, on the first slide, you know, in red, you know, T-cost now of your April bill was 27%. So back, back when I first started in 2008 and I was coming to Bowie, T-cost was about 6% or 7% of your bill. So it was a, it was kind of a small, a small portion, so a 4% or 5% increase, it, it probably didn't get your attention. But now T-cost has grown so much that it's, it's a sizable chunk of your bill. And so like April, you know, we charged you $90,000 because we were charged $90,000. And so it's, um, 5% of 90,000 is a lot more than 5% of 20,000, which you were billed years and years ago. And so it's, um, it's a material part of your bill, and you probably need to be aware of that because it's, it's, it's only gonna go up, unfortunately, is what we believe. I think that is about it. I think that's about it. I'm happy to answer any questions or...
The way we recover our T-cost is, uh, we, it's according to load, in other words, depends on how much load each customer uses, how we divide that out per customer. We're doing the same thing here, but it's just, it's, uh, it's based on load.
Based on load each month, so that's the way we do it. We have more problem with the, uh, fuel costs and, and recovery... We have more problem with the fuel costs and recovering that, but that's how we do it, so...
Yeah, the fuel cost sort of hits, it kind of sort of works the same way, is to the extent, we have a fuel recovery fund, and so, we, we set our fuel cost somewhere, we set our fuel cost at a number. I think our, our fuel cost is now like .034 or something like that. And we don't like to move it around a ton, and we just, we have a fund. And so, to the, to the extent that we start to over-recover, we'll drop that. And to the extent we are under-recovered, we'll raise it. And I would say, historically, we've, we've moved fuel every, every year or two, unless something like Winter Storm Yuri, which I, I don't know how many of the council was around for that, but it was a, BTU received a huge bill and you received a huge bill. And so, we had to, we had to act immediately and raise our, our fuel rate for our retail customers.
Just to let you know how fortunate we are, after Winter Storm Yuri, we had a fuel, our fuel bill was a million two, and we didn't pass that on to customers. We had the funds in-house that we paid it, paid it straight up. So, the John Q. Public didn't have to, and our citizens didn't have to come up the money to pay that million two, because we had it. So, that was one of the fortunate things.
But that is fortunate.
I need to, at this point in time, say something about BTU. When I got here, six years ago, a little more than six years ago, I had heard, didn't know that, what kind of relationship that we had with BTU, and it didn't seem to be real good, but anyway, we started meeting pretty regular, about every quarter with Ken and Wes, and, and, of course, we know the other people there, we've been to Brian and stuff, and it's, we're not customers. It's like we're a partnership now, and that's the way that I like to say it. Anything the good that happens to them also happens to us. They don't hold that back. And, and we really appreciate working with BTU, because they've been a really good partner in, in our electric business, so, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, I'd really like to open up the floor to questions for Ken while he's here, because there's not anybody better in the room that can answer any of your questions.
So, how are the T-cost rates set, and then, how often, who regulates that, ERCOT, I'm going to assume, and how often are they looking at that and then making these changes?
Yeah, absolutely. The, and so, the re, the T-cost rates are set every year, and what transmission companies do is they submit their cost to ERCOT, and then the PUCT reviews those costs. So, ERCOT will make a recommendation, say, yes, this is valid. The PUCT reviews them, and if they agree, they will roll them into the annual T-cost. And so, and probably more information than you want, but every, annually, a, something called a T-cost matrix is generated, and that lists everybody's cost, and it's by, by load. So, Buie's on there, BTU's on there, all load-serving entities are on there, and it tells you, you owe this now. And so, it's a pretty, it's a pretty straightforward process, and it's, it's very easy to calculate what you owe, and it's been going up a lot.
It's also figured on usage, isn't it? That's the baseline, the usage?
The, the baseline is actually something called the four CP, and it's the four coincident peaks in, and so, the four coincident peaks is June, July, August, and September. And so, they take your peak usage in those months, and they take, they take everybody's peak usage in your month, in those months. And so, say you were 1% of ERCOT peak usage, you are responsible for 1% of the total T-cost bill.
Well, you must have been very good.
I doubt that.
TJ, any questions? You weren't, you haven't been here very long. Brent, anymore?
None coming to mind at the moment, that answered a lot and so forth.
We'll call Wes or Ken if you think of one later on.
That'd be perfect.
And I'll put them on the phone with you.
Yeah, or email me, I'm, I'm very prompt to getting back on.
I appreciate the time and the effort that it took to get here, because this is the hardest thing we have to understand, is the electricity. I've been fortunate enough to work with y'all for the last seven years, so I understand it this much. But, we know we're in a, and, we know we're in a situation, we're going to have to make some decisions for our community, and this will help educate us.
I know it doesn't feel any better, Mayor, but like, everybody is in that same boat, because of T-cost, just, just on a tear.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Well, we are one of the few cities that's held strong for five and a half years. So, I mean, that's something to be grateful for. All right, well, we appreciate you very much, Ken. We appreciate you too, Wes.
Wes, don't you want to stand up and say something?
I'm standing up to walk out this roar.
Well, um...
Mayor, good to see y'all, thank you. If you have any questions...
Thank you, I know you guys have a road trip.
You can Google ERCOT T-cost matrix, and you can find a lot of this stuff, it's all public, so, it'd be a nice little forum to go down, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is the public comments. I know that some of you are here, but I don't know if anybody's here for public comment. Please find your way to the podium and tell us who you are.
Good evening, I'm Kim Moore, I'm Carol Moore's husband, she spoke at your last meeting.
Yes.
And I thanks, thank you, Mayor and councilors, for this opportunity to talk. I did go out to the park this morning and walked around and looked at the repair work that has been done, it's, it's an improvement, and you can get around a little bit better. But that's a patch, and that patch is already crumbling around some of the edges, and it's causing some little, I call them asphalt balls. And you know, when you step on an asphalt ball, you're going to slip. So, you put that little asphalt ball on top of some still uneven pavement out there, you still have a hazard. And that's what I'm concerned about. Now, they've made it, they've made good progress, they've gotten around, you said, 75% of the patching is done, and I, I didn't quite come up with that number. When I walked around there, I did some step, I stepped off quite a bit of paces, and you can, there, there's quite a bit, and I would say that there's probably a third, or two-thirds of it, or maybe a little less. Without getting a measuring wheel, it's, it's hard. Walking around, you have to watch where you walk. You can't look around, you can't see the trees, you can't see what's going on, you have to watch where you're walking. If you don't, you are going to roll an ankle, you're going to trip, you're going to fall. And as you know, falling at the ages of a lot of people who walk out there, and a lot of you who are in this room, when you fall, you're going to hurt yourself. And unfortunately, that's what happened to Carol. That's what happened to this lady over here. But I am happy to say, you know, that it's been four months since Carol fell. And she has suffered through a tremendous amount of pain and endured over 15 physical therapy sessions, and I'm happy to say that she's doing much better. She's regained most of her functionality and strength in her left hand, but she still has a ways to go. And unfortunately, it doesn't look like she's going to regain 100% in her hand, in her little finger. So, Mr. Shaw, you made a great observation last meeting, or you had a great question is what it was, when you asked, should we shut the park, the trail down? And the industry that I came from is the oil industry. When we had a hazard, a safety hazard that's hurting people, we shut down immediately and determined what we had to do to fix that problem, so we don't hurt people again. So, we elevate that problem to the highest level. And what that does for us, it helps us to, to, to prevent people getting hurt. We fix a hazard, and it saves us money. If we don't, if we didn't do that, you're going to spend all kinds of time, all kinds of resources on, with people trying to figure out what happened, and then OSHA comes up. And what they do to you is, you know, they, they find you, most of the time, they'll find you hundreds of thousands of dollars for, for an accident. And then, your worker's compensation goes up. So, if, if your workers are out there fixing this track, and they roll their ankle and they trip and fall, then that's a lost time accident, especially if they go to the hospital and get treatment, take a pain pill, get a shot. You've got a lost time accident on your hand, your worker's compensation's going to go up, and now, OSHA is going to, may get involved. And then, everything you do out there in the streets, out there in your, your, your bridges, your roadwork, all that stuff is going to be under scrutiny. So, one other, a couple of other observations that I had when I was walking around was, I noticed there's some handicap parking over by the knife, and over there by the skate park, so, handicap folks can park and get out and enjoy the park. And they have access to this trail. And it makes me wonder, is it ADA approved? You're allowing access there, and can a wheelchair get around? Can someone on crutches get around safely? I think there would be a lot of people who'd like to get out there and walk around that track, take somebody in a wheelchair around that track, but they don't do it because the condition of the track. Some of you have been out there, and you've seen it, and these ladies over here walk nearly every day. My, Carol walks nearly every day, and I admire her for that. Five miles a day, and she's in the middle of a 100-mile walk in England right now, that's why she's not here. So, you have a lot of avid walkers in this town. You'd have a whole lot more that would take advantage of that trail out there, if it was in the condition that it was originally planned for. You know, the, the soccer fields, you got, I don't know how many soccer fields are out there, probably six or more, a bunch. And then, you see the kids out there playing soccer, and there, the parking lot's full, and there's people all around, and I don't know how many hundreds of people have to walk on that trail to get to those soccer fields. So, how many more people are we putting at risk because of that condition of that walking Also, Carol didn't mention it last meeting, but she circulated a petition, a written petition and a petition online. And I was pretty amazed that we got 191 signatures. And the petition just simply reads the, the first letter, or the first line says, "Petition for repair and resurfacing Pelham Park walking trail." So, there's 191 people, other than that group of 10 or 11 that was here last meeting, to show support for this walking trail. My last comment, well, maybe not my last, but I'll make it my last. You know, I found myself wondering how the, how a city can invest hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, in a community park with several nice amenities. It's a beautiful park. There's lots of stuff going on out there. You got the trade days, and you got hundreds of people out there on trade days. Plus, you have a walking track, and it's not properly maintained for your citizens' safety. So, I urge you to reconsider patching. I know this costs money, but also costing a lot of people pain and suffering. And that's what I would like to see, is prevent any other person out there from breaking an ankle, breaking an arm, breaking a leg, falling. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them, or these two ladies over here will help.
Well, unfortunately, under public comments, we, we don't get to talk back with you, but everybody did take, I saw lots of people taking notes for what you had to say. And again, we'll look at it. I was, I was grateful that Stony was able to get some of the repairs done, and it is on our bucket list of things to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, well, Council, we're going to close our meeting at 6:45, and then, we're going to move into the conference room for our workshop.
You going to give it to the panel?
Yes, please.